...that caused us to start the meeting late. Let me read this statement regarding our meeting process. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order Number N dash twenty-nine dash twenty and the orders of the Ventura County Public Health Officer issued March twentieth, twenty twenty, stay at well home, stay well at home order. We are immediately going to go into closed session. I would like to ask Adam Clerk to please do the roll call.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Gama?
Here.
Councilmember Rollins?
Here.
Mayor Munoz Knopf?
Here.
And Mayor Hernandez?
Here. Thank you very much. We will also take a public comment on this at this time. Do we read the submittals that we received this afternoon? Is that what we do now, Kristi?
We'll read those during open session.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. All right, very good. So let's go on then to the closed session items. If there are no public comments. And can we ask our city attorney to please read those items?
Thank you, Mayor Hernandez. There are two items on closed session. The first one is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section fifty-four nine fifty-six point eight. The property in question is the vacant property on the west side of Market Street between Scott Street and Port Wenomee Road bearing APN two zero six zero nine one dash two eight five and dash three oh five. Agency negotiators are Brad Connors, City Manager, myself, Steve Kinney, and the negotiating parties are the City of Port Wenomee and the Oxnard Harbor District, and the purpose of this is to negotiate price in terms of payment. The second is another conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section fifty-four nine fifty-six point eight. The property in question with respect to this one is the property located at two forty-one through two forty-five East Port Wenomee Boulevard bearing APN two zero six zero zero nine four dash oh five oh and dash oh six oh. The same agency negotiators are present, Mr. Connors, Charles Green, myself, Steve Kinney. The negotiating parties are the City of Port Wenomee and Tony Suliman and Wenomee Beach Ventures, and what's under negotiation is price and terms of payment.
Okay, well, go ahead and proceed with a closed session.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, again, I will state for our public, we are conducting this meeting pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order number 29-20 and the orders of the Ventura County Public Health Officers Stay Well at Home Order of March 2020. Twenty. The council chamber has been closed to the public and council members and staff are participating remotely to help play our part in minimizing the spread of COVID-19. The public has been informed well in advance of the meeting how to submit all public comments to our city clerk. The city clerk has compiled all submissions and those received prior to 5:00 p.m. deadline today have been forwarded to the entire city council for review prior to the meeting. We will also read those public comments into part of the official meeting record. May I ask Madam Clerk to please take the roll?
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
I am here.
Councilmember Rollins?
Here.
Mayor Portem Munyoshna?
Here.
And Mayor Hernandez?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, and I have the pleasure tonight of providing the inspirational message for our meeting. And what I found was a letter that was written to the Army soldiers, civilians and family members and soldiers for life regarding our current state of affairs with the civil unrest we've been we've been witnessing, the problems we've been having with racial divide. And when I read this letter, I thought it was very appropriately written and it would be something that I would want to say to our city employees and to our residents. So in that in that thought, I'm going to read it, but if you could kind of look at it from the standpoint of how we might communicate the same message to our residents and to our city employees, that's my intent here. So it says, "Dear soldiers, civilians, family members and soldiers for life. Over the past week, the country has suffered an explosion of frustration over the racial divisions that still plague us as Americans. And because your army is a reflection of American society, those divisions live in the army as well. We feel the frustration and anger. We felt it this week while traveling through the nation's capital with the D.C. National Guard. We feel it even though we can never fully understand the frustration and life experiences of people of color in or out of a uniform. But we do understand the importance of taking care of people and of treating every person with dignity and respect. Our ability to defend this country from all enemies, foreign and domestic, is founded upon a sacred trust with the American people. Racial division erodes that trust. Though we all aspire to live by the Army values of loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity and personal courage, the Army has sometimes fallen short. Because just as we reflect the best of America, we reflect its imperfections as well. We need to work harder to earn the trust of mothers and fathers who hesitate to hand their sons and daughters into our care. How we respond to the anger that has ignited will chart the course of that trust. Every soldier and department of the Army civilian swears an oath to support and defend the Constitution just as we did as city council members. That includes the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. We will continue to support and defend those rights and will continue to protect Americans whether they're the from enemy enemies of the United States overseas, from COVID-19 at home, or from violence in our communities that threatens to drown out the voices begging us to listen. To Army leaders of all ranks, listen to your people, but don't wait for them to come to you. Go to them. Ask the uncomfortable questions. Lead with compassion and humility and create an environment in which people feel comfortable expressing grievances. Let us be the first to set the example. We are listening and we will continue to put people first as long as we are leading the Army, because people are your greatest strength. God bless all the people of the United States of America, our soldiers, our families, our civilians and soldier for life, retirees and veterans, and God bless the United States of America. Oh, I hope that we can all take the spirit of that message and apply that to our city here in Portway-Nimie. So thank you for that and let's go ahead and move to agenda approval. And I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to approve the agenda and we'll take a voice vote.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
I. Roll call.
It said voice vote. Is that a roll call vote?
What you said.
Voice vote.
Can I have a question, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Our attorney, Kevin.
Our attorney Kevin. Um, V C T C, Gold Coast, SCAG, everyone of the other Zoom meetings that I participated in, everyone has had the attorneys have all said, no, you have to have a roll call vote because of the Zoom format.
I would agree with that assessment as well.
For everything, everything you have to vote, even if you're here, you got to vote.
That would be, that would be my recommendation as well for clarity.
All right. Well, thank you for that, Councilmember. Madam Clerk, would you like to go ahead and take a roll call vote, please?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Mayor Potem Munyoshna?
Yes.
Councilmember Rollins?
Yeah.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
And Mayor Hernandez?
Yes. Okay.
Motion passes, five zero.
All right, the agenda's been approved. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to report on the closed session, please?
Thank you, Mayor Hernandez. There were no reportable actions in closed session at this time.
Okay, we'll go ahead now and recess to recess the city council meeting and move into the housing authority meeting. And I'd like to ask Madam Clerk to take role for the housing authority.
Member Burke?
Here.
Member Brown?
Johnny? Oh, you need to move, take your, yeah, off mute. There you go, Johnny.
I'm here.
Okay. Member Gama?
Yeah.
Member Rollins?
Here.
Vice Chair Munyoshna?
Here.
And Chair Hernandez?
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you very much. And I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a second, thank you. And we are now receiving public comment for the housing authority. Do we have any public comments?
None have been received, Mayor.
Okay, we now have the consent calendar. And I'll read the items on that calendar. They include the minutes of the Housing Authority Regular Meeting of May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty and the recommendations to approve the minutes. Item number two, finance cash dispersments for May ninth, two thousand and twenty through June fifth, two thousand and twenty, and the recommendation is to ratify the dispersments. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent?
On the agenda, I think we just had a motion and a second, but no vote. Am I correct?
We took a roll call vote.
On the, okay.
Yeah.
Are we supposed to vote individually on this, too?
Yes, we will.
Everything.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Member Burke?
Yes.
Member Rollins?
Yes.
Member Brown?
Yes.
Member Gama?
Yes.
Vice Chair Munyoshna?
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The business item we have on the agenda is the adoption of the amended Housing Authority Budget for Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one. And I'd like to ask staff to please present the report. We have Mr. McDonald?
No.
Present the report.
Ms. Basua.
I, I, I will be presenting.
Okay, Ms. Basua, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, co-chair members of the board and staff. The item before you this evening is a staff recommendation for the Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one amended budget. The amended budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget is estimated at a surplus of nine thousand and sixty-two dollars in the public housing program and fifty-three thousand in the housing choice voucher program. That concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Okay, do any of the members have questions for Ms. Basua? Member Rollins?
So what happens to the surplus by the, at the end of the fiscal year? Is that carried over or do you start new?
We, we start new. The surplus is reported to HUD and HUD adjusts, adjusts their budget based on our surplus for the following year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Brown, Member Brown?
Okay, I don't know. I just wanted to ask again about the windows. Are they, are they going to put them in after or are they going to wait till the switch is over? Or I don't know what's going on with that. No, I haven't gotten an answer.
No, the, the windows are still scheduled. They're still in the budget. If you look at your budget package, it's under the MOD grant. There's about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars within that grant and that money is going to be used for the, for the windows and doors.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor Potem?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Basua, for the presentation. Quickly, you had said we have ninety-six thousand in one as surplus?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand, okay. And then the other one was fifty-three hundred?
Fifty-three thousand.
Five, oh, that was the fifty-three thousand, okay. And so when you said that HUD, these numbers are reported to HUD and they adjust then, would they ratchet down based on this for the coming fiscal year?
That is correct.
Okay, and then what happens when, have we ever had, let me restate my question, have we ever had a situation where we have a deficit in these line items?
There has been. There's been situations, especially in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, where there is a deficit. In that case, there is a team in the HUD D C office that will kind of guide us and we would be requesting additional appropriations for the Housing Authority.
So it sounds like we are better off having this budget surplus than having to go through the different steps when we don't have a surplus.
That is correct.
Well, good work. Thank you. That's all for me.
Okay, Councilmember, I mean, Member Burke?
Thank you very much. Can we get a a start date for when those, the work on the windows might begin? I mean, I know we're entering into the summer months. It's going to be a lot warmer. Is it going to be done over the summer to be ready by winter or starting the winter? Do you have any idea at all when that might start, Gabby?
Uh, Member Burke, I can have a report to you next month in regards to what we are trying to accomplish. And we're going to actually be going out for architectural work in order to accomplish this.
Architect, what's architectural work?
Well, we're going to make sure that the windows that are going, because of the building and the age of the building, we, we need to make sure that architecturally the windows are going to be the right fit, energy efficient and so on and so forth when it comes to HUD.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so any other questions? Councilmember Rollins?
Okay, so the money to pay for these windows, will this be in next year's budget?
That, that is correct. It's actually, in next year's budget, there's about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted for the windows and it's all coming through the capital grant fund.
And I guess ma- maybe you answered, Member Schnop on it. The fact that we have a fifty-three thousand dollar surplus, are there things that need to be done this year that we might as well spend it, things that need to be fixed up the property?
Um, at, at this point, because we're still trying to get through COVID, there's not much we're going to be able to do with the fifty-three thousand, Member Rollins. So again, that money is going to be used next year and then HUD will be capturing back and adjusting our budget based on expenditures.
So ultimately, we lose out on that fifty-three thousand dollars?
We will at some point, yes.
Okay, Ms. Basua, I just have one question. To what do you attribute the surplus?
So the surplus has to do with the amount of rents that are being collected. So every year we budget and we assume that so much money the Housing Authority is going to collect in rents. Then we go ahead and we ask HUD for the difference in order to make us whole. Twenty nineteen before COVID was really good for the Housing Authority and we, and we collected more rents than anticipated.
Okay.
So that had to do with the surplus.
So then that means that the money that came to us in surplus is actually belongs to HUD?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Basua? Member, Member Gama?
I just want to say that if anybody of the council is ever in need of an inspiration, I think Mar Vista is a great inspiration for what good things a city can do. And I'm really proud of Gabby and I love Johnny and all the people over there. I, I think it's, it's a wonderful place and they're like a family and it's very inspiring and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Gama. Any other comments or questions from Ms. Basua? Okay, so we have a recommendation to adopt the resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Port Juaniemi approving the F Y two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one amended budget. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. And a roll call vote, please.
Member Rollins?
Yes.
Member Gama?
Yes.
Member Brown?
Yes.
Member Burke?
Yes.
Vice Chair Munyoshna?
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now at the point where we're asking for members' reports, comments and requests for future agenda items. And I'll just go according to my screen. Assistant Chair Schnop, do you have any reports, comments, requests?
Yes, I'd like to have the Housing Authority as, talk about the upcoming project, like the window project. I think that a long time ago, there was maybe a plan to revitalize the Willowbrook community. And so just kind of finding out some of those short-term and long-range kind of goals and seeing where we stand, that would be a great report for our future agenda. Thanks.
Okay. Member Burke?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, Member Rollins?
Yeah, just as a reiteration, like I guess next time, a report on where we stand on these windows and when they're going to be put in.
Okay, thank you. Member Gama?
My only comment is I would like to see a, a hard target date for the installation of those windows, hopefully at the end of October, which hopefully can be achieved.
Okay, thank you. Member Brown?
I have no, no comment other than to say thank you for the council members that are pushing to get our windows in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have no comments. Okay, if there are no other comments, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the Housing Authority meeting and reconvene our regular meeting of the city council. Thank you, Member Brown.
Hey, you're welcome.
Good seeing you, Johnny.
Okay, I'm scheduled for my surgery on July thirteenth.
Good luck.
Yeah, okay.
Take care.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we are now back in regular meeting session with our city council. And I'm going to go ahead and take the general public comments that I've been, that I've received so far. I don't believe there are any more, but I have three of them and I will go ahead and read them in the order that they were received. This one is from David Scrivner and it reads, Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem and City Council Members. There are three issues I want to address tonight. I would like to commend the council, the city manager, P H P D and the other unnamed city employees for the steps you have taken to deal with the real and present threats of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. He said treats, but I believe he meant threats. I believe that Juaniemi has handled this challenge as well or better than any city in the state. It is reassuring to know that our city is being run by competent people who have been able to make wise decisions in a crisis. Number two, what are the current plans for the proposed improvements at Miranda Park? There was slow, steady progress being made towards a rehab rehabilitation of the park until the COVID-nineteen pandemic descended upon us. Installation of the surveillance system stalled. Major components of the project, trenching and cabling have been completed, but the CCTV component, component does not appear to have been installed. At this point, the project is well over a year behind schedule. During the lockdown, criminal, criminal activity in the park evaporated. If passed as prologue, the unsavory characters who previously flocked to the park will return as soon as it is convenient for them to do so. I would like to think that they moved on to greener pastures and will not return, but what seems unlikely, but that seems unlikely. If the security system is functioning and the building is extensively used for some public purpose, the chances of them returning will decrease. An update on the current plans and timetable, timetable for improvements at the park would be appreciated. Item number three, in the run-up to the election in two thousand and eighteen, many promises made about how the funds generated by Measure U would be spent if it were approved by the voters. The public was led to believe that these funds would be required to be spent on improvements to public safety sidewalks, graffiti removal, parks, et cetera. In fact, the funds generated by Measure U go into the general fund and the council can spend them any way they see fit. There is no legal requirement for the council to honor the promises made to the, made prior to the election. The Tax Oversight Committee was set up to determine how the funds generated were being spent and report this back to the voters. I was appointed to the Tax Oversight Committee for Measure U in July of two thousand and nineteen. Today, we have had one meeting, which was introductory in nature. The first working session was canceled due to COVID-nineteen. It has been over a year and a half since the measure was passed and there has been no oversight. The Tax Oversight Committee has not been given any data whatsoever. But while I trust that the city is asking, is using the funds appropriately, this needs to be verified by an independent entity. What is the plan and the timetable to provide the Tax Oversight Committee with the data necessary to fulfill our mandate? Signed, David Scrivner. Thank you, David, for your submittal. We'll go ahead and pass this on to our city attorney for follow-up action. The next public comment comes from Janet Contreras. And she is writing in regards to Bubbling Springs Park and says, Good morning, hope you are doing well. This email is to support the idea of a dog park on the Bubbling Springs Park location. Although, although there might be some parks already like Oxnard College and H and Fifth Street, I think adding one by Bubbling Springs Park would be a great addition. The location will be convenient for those living nearby that need to walk their dogs or let them off leash for a while. We have restricted dog owners and dogs so much of what they can and can't do, and this will be a safe spot within the community. Also, I find it important for dogs to socialize with other dogs since some spend their life in the backyard only. Then people wonder why they bark so much. Dogs need a time to play and run free as well. Thank you for your time, Janet Contreras. Thank you, Janet, for your comments. We will submit these to the city manager for follow-up. The final comment comes from Kenny Paddock. Kenny provided two links to videos. I would encourage city council to look at those. We can't, we can't play them here. But it does read here that if you can't read the, if we can't play the video, she did provide this statement. Myself and others have come together to make a temporary dog park located next to the community center at Bubbling Springs Park from three-thirty to six P M. every day. I created a video that can be seen on the Port Juaniemi Neighborhood Facebook page and the new Bubbling Springs Dog Park Facebook page. We hope to open discussion with the city on where and how we can see our dream of a permanent dog park soon. In a very short time, many members of the neighborhood have come by with their fur kids to enjoy the park. We welcome other Port Juaniemi residents to bring their fur kids. Please reply with confirmation of receipt of video. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Kenny Paddock. This again will be referred to our city manager for a response. All right, moving along, there are no more public comments. We'll go now into presentations. And we have item one coming up on the Fourth of July holiday police department report by our chief, Andrew Salinas. Go ahead, chief.
Good evening, City Council. Actually, my report is going to include both the community update and the fireworks update in terms of what we're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me attempt to share my screener. Okay. So I'll be giving another COVID-19 update along with a community update, which will also include an update on the most recent uncivil unrest in our county, in our state, as well as in our city, as well as an update on what the Port Wainimi Police Department is doing in response to a fireworks season, is what I like to call it. So this was the chart that I presented at our last meeting, June 1st. From the previous two weeks of that, we had 12,000 new tests, which resulted in 388 cases. And Wainimi had six new cases. Now, since June 1st to present date, those numbers have changed significantly. And with only 10,000 tests in that same two-week period, we actually have now 481 positive cases in the county, of which 16 belong to the city of Port Wainimi, and there have been nine deaths during that same time. If we move over to this next chart, you can see here what has happened in all the cities over the last two weeks. Oxnard has experienced an additional 169 cases during that same time. We have increased by 16. Ventura has also had a significant increase, increasing by 80 cases, doubling their cases over the last two weeks. The entire county of Ventura as a whole has seen a significant increase over the last two weeks, so much so that it has put the county of Ventura back on a watch list for COVID-19 with the state. I talked previously before on how the goal was to have less than 25 per 100,000 population infection rate over the last 14 days. At our last meeting, Wainimi was at 8.29. Today, we were at 49.73. Now, during our, since our last meeting, I made mention that we've had 16 new cases. But the good news with that is, in spite of all of that, we still only account for 2.3% of all cases, positive cases in the county, even though we account for nearly 3% of the total county population. This is something, this is a chart that everyone can go to VC Emergency and look up, but we've reformatted our portwainimeemergency.org website. And on our front page, you can now get this information. You can simply go up to the right toolbar where it says "Search by City," use the scroll down, punch in "Port Wainimi," and you will get all the results for Port Wainimi, or really any other city in the county. As I had mentioned, in the last 14 days, as an entire county, our incidence rate went up to 48.72, where our goal is to be ideally around 25. So it has gone up significantly in the last 14 days. Now here you see the city of Port Wainimi, where we've had 12 cases in the last 14 days. And as I mentioned earlier, our incident rate jumped from eight all the way up to 49.73. Now, for the most part, we're averaging about one case a day over the last 14 days. So we're still kind of on the right path here in the city of Port Wainimi. We haven't had any locations such as senior living homes or retirement communities that have seen an outbreak occur. As we have recently heard of in Ventura, I believe it was in Ventura Townhomes that had a significant outbreak in their facility. Now, if we take Oxnard as an example here, over the last 14 days during that same time period, they've had 169 cases and their incidence rate jumped to 76.24. I only mention this is because, to remind everyone, that we are completely encapsulated by the city of Oxnard, yet our numbers continue to be well below theirs. When I say there's still good news, the county of Ventura is still well-prepared for any type of outbreak or second wave of COVID. We know this based on the availability of ventilators as well as hospital beds in the county. In spite of our hospitalization rate going up to 42 in the last two weeks, you can see that we still have 152, actually, it's a lot higher than that. I got the wrong screen captured there, but it is well into the hundreds as well as hospital beds in terms of availability throughout the county. I make reference to portwainimeemergency.org. Here's the front page. This is what you will see when you go into our website. I talked about the county graph that is, has been linked to our webpage, so you can go in there and see all of these numbers and just type in "Port Wainimi" in the upper right-hand corner and you can see our numbers as well as any other city in the county of Ventura and see how the county is doing as a whole. Continuing on with our website, it continues to have updated information such as you see here is the pier reopening tomorrow and what those guidelines are going to be, where all our county testing facilities are in Ventura County. You simply click on that link and it'll tell you exactly where to go, where you can get assistance in terms of rental assistance, as well as information on all of our local businesses and what they need to do in terms of social distancing guidelines and uploading their attestations. So speaking of the pier reopening, the pier will be reopening tomorrow at 6:00 a.m. We will have social distancing guidelines in place, which includes fishing zones for families or people that want to fish by themselves. The pier will have limited hours from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. They will also, we have removed the benches and seating at the pier as we will not be able to clean these areas on a regular basis and we don't want, we wanted to remove these touchpoints. But we are encouraging people to bring their own chairs while they are fishing there along the pier. And then the fish cleaning station has also been closed because we cannot clean that area and maintain that area on a regular basis. So we are encouraging everyone to please take their fishes home to clean them there. All of this signage has also been created and will be posted in and along the pier, along with distinct markings along the pier to encourage people to walk in a very specific direction. Street sweeping, we've gotten a few emails from residents really wanting the city to start street sweeping because it's starting to get accumulated with trash and leaves. And we feel that Ventura County has opened up enough that we can begin street sweeping in our city. We have given our residents a two-week notice and street sweeping will begin on June 22nd, the week of June 22nd, actually, because I don't believe street sweeping happens on a Wednesday or Thursday of that week. So it will actually be June 25th when street sweeping actually begins. And so we are warning our residents online, on all our social media platforms, our website, as well as we are deploying our message board trailer to all the neighborhoods so that they can actually see this while they're driving by during the day and evening. And as you can see in this picture here as well, which I hadn't realized until I put it on the presentation, as you can see in the gutters there, all the leaves that have accumulated over the past several months and have been there due to a lack of street sweeping. So we've gotten many emails and inquiries about our Sizzling Singers exercise program at the Singer Center. There was a very strong email campaign over these last several weeks. We have listened to everyone's concerns. We met today or yes, today with Sharon, Anna Hanley did. They have coordinated a plan. Hannah would like to get started as early as next week. But we are trying to coordinate a plan, a schedule with Sharon, our instructor, as to when she will be available to start these classes back up. But we will be able to start these classes back up as early as next week. Again, it's all dependent on the instructor's schedule. So since our last meeting, there has been an update to the stay-at-home order. The most recent update was on June 11th. Some of the changes that you can see on this list right here include the opening of campgrounds and outdoor facilities, day camps, casinos, gyms, fitness facilities, hotels. We all knew about restaurants and bars, museums, galleries, zoos. Things that are still not open are nail salons, tattoo parlors, and a little more direction on youth sports. Theaters have been allowed to open up with social distancing plans, but you're, what you'll find right now is a lot of the major theater companies are not opening up yet because they don't have new releases and they are still trying to come up with a plan to get people to come back to the theaters. So those have been approved to be open, but you won't find very many open as of yet. So as I explained earlier in the presentation, as a result of these lightning of restrictions, we can open the Wainimi Pier, start our singer-citizen fitness class, and resume street sweeping in our city. An economic update, something that has come about in the last couple of weeks is that the Ventura County Pandemic Rental Assistance Program has been started, which provides temporary rental assistance for Ventura County residents with very low incomes who owe past due rent because of a hardship due to COVID-19. People can go online and download applications between June 17th and July 1st. And they can visit the website www.ventura.org/rent to get more details and to download their applications. We have uploaded this link on not only our social media page, but also on our website in both English and in Spanish. When we started in March, COVID-19, it severely affected the unemployment rate in our state. I wanted to bring this about as part of our economic update. As you can see by the chart in the top right-hand corner, in January, our unemployment in Ventura County was at 3.9%. It actually got as low as 3.7% in February. You see it go up a full point in March as we began COVID-19 to 4.7%. And in April, it got as high as 14%. And as you can see by this map, the red and orange sections are the upper end of the unemployment rate with the Midwest region and middle of the United States ranging anywhere between 3% and 7% unemployment. At our last meeting, Council had brought up the most recent protests and civil unrest that came about. I was unable to talk about them as they were not a part of the agenda. They are now. So just before our last meeting, we entered into a second state of emergency in California and throughout the United States for that matter. We were not immune to it in our county. As you can see by these photos, the cities of Oxnard, Simi Valley, the County Government Center, and Santa Paula all had protests that were coordinated by the Black Lives Matters movement. As a result, we also had some issues in regards to people vandalizing local property here in Port Wainimi, as well as our museum. As you can see here, the gentleman in the upper left-hand corner was arrested by our police agency. One, a very observant citizen noted that this individual was vandalizing the museum by breaking its windows. When officers responded, they caught the suspect in the act of lighting a trash can on fire. There are the vandalized windows as well as the trash can that was lit on fire. I'll go back a slide here and here's video of the suspect, thanks to a video obtained by a, that was given to us by a local resident. You can see that he has a marker in his hand and the way he is dressed, which allowed us to actually connect him to all of these vandalism. If I go back here, you can see that based on the writing as well, that we were able to attribute all of these vandalism here to the same suspect.
Chief, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
About why he targeted the museum? What was the, what prompted him to target the museum versus any other building in our, in our city?
I'm, the quickest answer to that question is that he lived nearby. He lived on Seaview Street, which is crosses with Market. And so he was able to walk on foot, vandalize the local neighborhood. And if I had to guess, because the museum has an American flag on the outside and is city property, he chose to target that. Luckily, the trash can fire didn't ignite, which could have impacted the actual museum. And thanks to the observant citizen, we got out there rather quickly and were able to apprehend this suspect after a brief foot pursuit.
Thank you.
Here's another vandalism that was at Mandalay Village Marketplace over this past week. And I believe that has since been cleaned up. So one of our residents coordinated a peaceful protest/walk in the city of Port Wainimi. It started in parking lot B by the Alaska Memorial. It continued down Ventura Road to China Island's Boulevard. Our chaplains, as you can see in this picture, joined the march until they reached the police department. We had our chaplains deployed, not knowing what the size of the crowd was going to be and to help ensure that it was going to be a very peaceful protest and march. So over the last week, the eight can't wait. These are eight issues that have been brought about as a result of the protests and civil unrest in regards to the unfortunate death of George Floyd. So as a responsible police department and to keep our public informed, we responded to all of these issues. We were one of the first departments in the county to publicly respond to these issues. We created these infographics that we posted on social media as well as our webpage. Soon thereafter, the cities of Oxnard, Ventura, and the county soon followed with a very similar format.
Notice that.
Thanks for showing them the way.
Something to note in this, as you can see the use of force incidents in the bottom right-hand page. While we've had 27 over the last five years, 16 have been with a taser, 11 have been control holes. We have not used the carotid hold in the last five years, nor have we used any type of deadly force in the last five years. And something I'm very proud of, this department has had zero service complaints into the unlawful use of force with any of our citizens.
Cool.
So moving into fireworks season, many of you have seen these flyers or billboards before. These are the ones that we typically deploy at the, in the beach parking lots a week prior to the Fourth of July, as well as we often distribute these flyers using our explorers to go door-to-door in some of our neighborhoods where we continue to have a problem. Residents are reminded they can call our non-emergency line to report fireworks. They can also send an email message to fireworks@cityofportwainimi.org and report any problem locations that they are aware of. And they can also go to our website there on the bottom, which has plenty of questions along with the answers, along with these flyers and any type of additional information that someone could use as a result of the illegal use of fireworks, including our city ordinances that prohibit it. So over the last three years since I've been here, the very first year, we did a fireworks video with the fire chief. The second year, the City Council proudly enacted our The second year, the city council proudly enacted our fireworks host ordinance, which allows us to target homeowners, which allow the use of fireworks at their residence. This made it a little easier for us to hold those responsible for deploying fireworks in our city, because now we didn't have to go to, after a specific individual that all we had to do was prove what residence the fireworks were coming from. So this year, we needed to do something different as well. So we enacted a operation called Operation Dark Skies, where we posed as buyers online and we attempted to facilitate illegal purchase of fireworks. We were able to facilitate three large deals, which resulted in the confiscation and seizure of over 700 pounds of illegal fireworks that you can see in these two photos. We are continuing with this, looking for sellers online. One of the concerns from the comments on this was that we were using taxpayer money to purchase illegal fireworks. Something to note is after the deal is completed and the officers make the stop, we do recover all of our money from the sale and we reuse the money again. So we are not using taxpayer money to buy illegal fireworks in the sense that we are not recovering the money. We do recover our money and it goes back into the city coffers. So with that, that ends my presentation. Just a reminder that everyone can visit portwainimeemergency.org. They can also visit any one of our social media platforms, especially Facebook and nextdoor.com and YouTube for that matter, to obtain any additional information. So with that, I can entertain any questions from city council.
Thank you, Chief, very much for all your work. Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, Councilmember Rollins had his hand up first, so I'll go after him.
Okay, Councilman Rollins, sorry, I didn't see him.
Why not?
Because your picture is like this big.
Okay. I'm just playing.
Yeah, me too.
So this is an initial comment. I'm wondering whether the increase in cases is somehow related to the fact that the county is doing a better job as far as marketing the ability to be tested. I, I've learned to read that like there can be a number of people that are tested positive that don't have symptoms. And if they had never gotten tested, they might not even know that they are positive. I don't know if you want to comment on that or not.
Yes, so anecdotally, I would attribute it to three different things. That being one of them, we do have more testing facilities. And so I do know people are getting tested multiple times. The reason I know that is because they are performing more tests than, than are people actually being tested. So there are people being tested numerous times. There's the reopening of Ventura County with more businesses now being open, including restaurants and bars. And then also we've had the many protests throughout Ventura County over the last week and a half. So I think those three things are contributing to the increased positive rate.
Number two, as you have surmised, like the Sizzling Senior Program is very popular. Has, I guess there's two different alternatives. One is to do it indoors where the spacing is every 12 feet and one is to do it where the space, outdoors where the spacing is every six feet has, is there a direction where the city staff wants to go in, in that respect?
Yes, good question. Anna met with Sharon today and they coordinated a plan where the activity will be occurring outdoors, which will allow them to socially distance at just six feet as opposed to 12 feet indoors. And they believe the concrete surface in the quad area could potentially accommodate all the seniors.
Okay. Number three, can you just share like what the progression of opening up more beach park facilities moving towards July 4th might look like?
Another good question. So since our last meeting, we opened up more parking along Surfside between Ventura Road and Parking Lot E. We do still have parking lots A and B open, every other parking spot, as well as Parking Lot E, which is totally open. We will be opening up the, all the parking lots as well as the street parking a week before the Fourth of July. So we want to be fully open during our busiest week, whether it be the parking on the street, on Market Street, or any of our parking lots, whether they be A, B, C, or D.
And the next thing regarding this COVID would be, and maybe it's a certain amount of lack of clarity right now. The lifeguard program, some people have seen that it's going to be closed for the summer. I've heard other reports that it's just being delayed for the summer. I know I did some research on other counties up and down and they're handling it different ways. What's happening in Wainimi?
I do not have an update on the Junior Lifeguard Program. If Deputy City Manager Charles Parret is online or our recreation manager and handler are online, perhaps they can answer that question.
Chief, you have the most current information. We're still reviewing that program against the regulations that exist and no decision has been made as of today.
Okay, okay, so then right now it's, it's just on hold. I've actually seen some, you know, with different counties handling it different ways, ones that they're gonna, you're just not going to have it for the summer. Others are having it with some kind of modified things happening to make it happen.
Now, just, just to follow up really quickly, now there are regulations that are coming out such as day camp regulations, which are allowing a 10 to one or 10 to two ratio and does not allow the groups to intermingle if you have multiple groups. So there are ways around it and it may be a reality here in Port Wainimi if we're able to keep our numbers down or limited to a certain amount of people.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would tend to think that like, well, this is kind of the Junior Lifeguard Program, while it has some very educational things, is somewhat of a modified summer sports camp focusing on swimming and lifesaving. And so when I saw that they are going to be making some adaptations to day camps, I figured in our creative, progressive manner, we could figure out ways to make that happen here.
Yes.
Councilman Rollins, this is City Manager Connors. The intent is to activate and support a program. It may be a different program from previous summers in compliance with these things, but our intent is to try to make that happen as soon as possible.
Great. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Rollins. Madam Mayor, Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So thanks for this report, Chief. You know, I talked about some of the numbers and how they're reported. And so one of those was that for any numbers that show up positive for COVID that are PO boxes, although people, we don't know if they live in our city, but they're recorded as being part of our city, right? The numbers.
That is a very good question. And so, yes, the numbers that are reflected right now in Port Wainimi identify with a very particular zip code. And for us, it's 93041, which also includes the Point Mugu Base, the Port Wainimi Base, as well as any PO boxes. So several of those cases actually belong to the base. I believe there's three to four cases that belong to the base and at least two PO boxes in Port Wainimi, where I don't know where they currently live.
Okay, all right. So thanks for that clarification, because I know there's been some chatter back and forth on some social media pages and you know, what's reported and what isn't reported. So I just wanted to clarify that with you again. And then what about the business openings? I know that the county, once we get approval from the state, if it's faster track or the phases or whatnot, the businesses have to actually register online, right? And then there's some kind of process and protocol that happens with city checking facilities, that kind of thing. What, where do we stand with the number of businesses that want to open? And how fast is that process that they go through with us?
So any business that wants to open can go to vcreopens.org and they are encouraged or it's actually they are mandated to upload their social distancing plan. They, as soon as they do so, they can actually open up. Eventually, someone from the county will come down and do an inspection where they will get officially signed off. I do know Steve Kinney, as well as our code compliance people, have been visiting businesses, making sure that they have all the information that they need. And we are encouraging people to contact us if they need any assistance at all.
You're making me miss my question.
And with that, I think we're actually giving them some additional resources like those that exist at EDCBC and you know, maybe support in that way.
Yes, we are also recommending that everyone visits our website where they can get information on business grants. I believe up to $5,000, as long as their business makes an annual revenue of less than $2 million that they are, that they are available to apply for.
Yeah, that's a super program put together with EDCBC and County of Ventura, I think, in my powers office. So it's really wonderful support for our businesses. And then last but not least, I ended up asking Ashley Bautista and and then Patrick Maynard, who head up the weekly call for our elected officials.
Councilman Gama, can you put your, thank you.
Okay, thanks. And so I was, I was interested in how the numbers had jumped so much within like the last two weeks. We've really had bump ups of, you know, what have been reported for the cities, including for Wainimi. And so my concern was that I've not seen any of these COVID tests or locations. So could they walk me through that? Because I was interested in finding out, could somebody who doesn't have COVID and goes to get tested because they think they have it, would there be some kind of transmittal there possibly at the testing venues? And so they came back to me with some really specific ways of how they actually do test. They give the whole kit to the person who's in the car. You know, they only allow them to roll down the window so much. Everything is behind the glass and they're social distance from them in order to take the information. You don't have to have a, an appointment to do this. They've opened up many more locations, including one here at Oxnard College. And so they, they basically mentioned to me that, no, there's no way somebody could actually pick up COVID if they're at the testing site. So that then reassured me saying that that's not a place of transmittal. That's really just a place of testing. So transmittal is happening, happening somewhere else, which leads then to just allowing you to tell us that, you know, some of these numbers are within the same household. And so we're seeing that that's being one of the, maybe the quicker ways of the numbers going up is that they are within that framework of these folks all live under the same house or have the same address. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yes, so a couple of things there. So I have personally been tested and been to one of the testing sites and they practice extreme precautions when you go in there. They sterilize everything between each patient. They are sterilizing the seats. They actually alternate seats. So I do know from experience, both through the drive-through as well as the walk-up, that there is a very low chance, if any, to acquire COVID in that manner. In regards to multiple people in the same household, that's another good question. Each body does get counted, but we don't get notified of the address again. So for instance, if someone had it in the household a week ago and they, and their child now has it a week later, if they get tested, we get advised of that new positive test, so that gets added to our total tally. But I will not receive another residential address as I do every day via email, warning the police department of where the new patient is located, which we document so our firemen, as well as our police department can practice universal precautions if they get sent to that address.
Okay. And then a couple of other things they talked about was that they're not taking any more new folks in the hotel housing of the homeless population that was at risk, that they have actually been maxed out on that program. That was one thing. And then the other thing was for the elderly that have registered for the meals, they've served an enormous number of people during this timeframe. But again, they're not taking any new folks on that list either.
I don't know much on the maximum occupancy in regards to the homeless and the use of hotels. I do know Anna has been approached about increasing her meal delivery service. And I know she's in the process of considering what that would take and if we even have the resources to accommodate that.
So I think that, that's one of the things that the county was concerned about as well is that, you know, if they have to continue with the numbers that they have, that maybe they, they would either get to exhausted and so they didn't necessarily want to add anybody else to the, to the rule. Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Gama, you had a comment?
Yeah, Rich, I had my hand up early on, but, so I wasn't seen either. But anyways, so testing, I know it's the first thing that you got into and I had this burning question and so hopefully I didn't lose my train of thought. But so the people that are coming to get tested, generally speaking, would be concerned that they may have been exposed or they're showing symptoms, so they get tested. So right off the bat, you're gonna, I think it's reasonable to expect you're gonna see a high, higher positive testing rate and I apologize for the loud birds. So I was wondering, do we have numbers on the total tests taken? And then is there any estimate? Because I haven't been tested, I haven't had any reason to be tested, I haven't felt sick or, or. So I'm just wondering, you know, is there any attempt to take into consideration that fact that perhaps, you know, the people that are coming to get tested may feel they have symptoms? And if that's true, then you're gonna have more positive tests than you would if you mandated everybody get tested. Does that make sense?
Yes, and you are correct. So early on, you had to portray some type of symptoms in order to get tested. Nowadays, you don't need to have symptoms at all. You can go in there every single day and get tested if you would like. So I know that might be skewing the numbers a little bit. I don't have the numbers in regards to how many people in Port Wainimi have been tested. I believe we asked that a couple of months back initially and they said they don't keep those statistics, that they only keep track of this total amount tested, as well as those positive tests and then track those addresses with those positive tests. But I will follow up on that to see if we can actually get a number in terms of total tests in the city of Port Wainimi.
Thank you. And then the other question or comment is hospitalizations. Is that number staying flat, going down, or increasing in Ventura County?
Hospitalizations over the last two weeks have gone up. One of the points I was trying to make was that we definitely have the capacity right now to deal with that surge. We have more than enough right now with 42 hospitalizations and over 160 beds still available. That leads me to believe that we still have 80% of our ventilator, as well as our hospital capacity, still available to us.
Okay, and then just would like to make one more comment on parking. I understand the goal is to spread people out across the beach and, you know, I'm having a hard time understanding why And, you know, I'm having a hard time understanding why maybe the Surfside, I always get confused on the numbers. But anyways, Surfside 3, why is it we can't open that parking and then leave the beachside closed? And why is it that we can't open Market Street? Because it seems to me that we're concentrating people in those two parking lots that are getting filled up. And it just seems to me that it might, like again, I'm frustrated. I'm having a hard time explaining to people why. And I get frustrated when I can't go and park at the beach and watch the sunset. So I would just like to figure out a way to, to get more parking, get it spread out. And, and I know you're working on that, and so that's my comment.
Okay, duly noted. Within the next week, as we lead up to the 4th of July, we will have all of that open. As explained a little bit earlier, on Surfside Drive, we're leaving that portion open because it allows for an expanded walkway in a bicycle lane, especially since we have so many people nowadays using the walkway that goes out to the lighthouse, as well as using Market Street. And so I've been very resistant to, to open that up right now because it's so, it gets heavily used. But you are correct in that it would open up more of that area for people to use that section of the beach. So we will have that opened up sooner than later.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Councilman Burke?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, Chief, I want to thank you very much for, for what you're doing and for your proactive approach to all of this, not just to the coronavirus, but also to the, the disturbances that are occurring in the public, whether they be riots or just demonstrations. But your proactive approach to police work is admirable. I see that other people, other cities are now following your lead. It's just indicative of how valuable you are to us. I want to also, although we don't always agree with you guys on the emergency committee there, city manager, chief, and the mayor, we appreciate what you guys are doing. We appreciate the situation, the position you've been put in. We just hope to get through this as quickly as possible. We still want to get back to business as usual. I'm really excited to see if we can get the sizzling seniors back exercising again. They know that they are a threatened population, as, as some of us on the board are. And so, and they're consciously making changes, them get to where they need to be so that they can start exercising again. I look forward to the day that they're up and running. So thank you very much for what you guys are doing. It is appreciated, although sometimes it doesn't sound like it, I know. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Steph, I got a text from a very able person that the public was on, is unable to view our meeting right now.
All right, I just also wanted to say to Chief Salinas, thank you for all the due diligence you are performing and making sure that we are maintaining some crowd control measures at the beach. And I think part of the reason that we, you've done, what you've done with the cones and the separation of the parking spaces is really a resource issue, is it not? I mean, we just have to keep the crowds, we've had to keep the crowds down. It's a management and, and personnel allocation problem, is it not?
Yeah, well, yeah.
I mean, you don't have the resources to really enforce everybody to wear their masks and to practice social distancing. You don't have the police officers to do that if you open up the beaches. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. We don't have the manpower, just like dogs on the sand, in, in terms of being able to actively enforce. You know, we're hoping that everybody self-regulates and simply follows the rules, kind of like the, the pier reopening tomorrow. We aren't gonna have peer police out there. We just hope that everyone reads the guidelines and follows the procedures. So yes, and quite frankly, we have become a busier beach. People like coming to Port Wainimi Beach. We got a lot more attention recently. People have uncovered this hidden gem. And people are coming back in droves. And so it is showing. And in response to Councilmember Gama, we may not wait till the 4th of July to open all of that up because we are seeing increased traffic at our beaches because people are out of school already. People aren't going on vacations. And so rather than going on vacations, that they're coming to the local beach. And so we do acknowledge that, and we are gonna have to respond accordingly.
And I just wanted to also thank you for the work you're doing with regards to the protests and the George Floyd aftermath. I know that we have a wonderful department and, you know, friendly, basically a friendly police department for the most part, and we don't have the complaints that other jurisdictions experience. But we still have the dangers and the risks that our officers take every day that they go out there. And I know it must be hard on them to witness the attacks that law enforcement is receiving right now. But I just want you to know that you have my full support. And I will always speak in favor of your department because of the good work you do and the posture that you maintain in being professional officers and, and fair in the treatment of, of our public. So thank you for that.
I do appreciate that.
Okay, and then I'd like to go to Madam Mayor Protem.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, one thing I do want to stress is that, yes, I've seen an uptick in the beach activity. But you know what? It seems like everybody who's out at the beach is really practicing social distancing. I'm like really proud of the people that are visiting our location because I do see that. Now, some of them could like hang out a little bit afterwards and all. But I think overall, people are really kind of taking this seriously and saying that at least we have this outdoor activity. We have this outdoor place that we can recreate in, we're gonna take advantage of it. But yes, we are aware of these rules that need to be followed. And so, you know, great job for the community, really coming out to, you know, visit our wonderful asset here, but also knowing that, you know, there's extra precaution these days and following recommendations. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rollins? You have to take yourself out, off mute, Councilman.
Yes, in, in a time where, you know, the police are being questioned, I just want to congratulate our police department for being very public relations oriented. I've watched them go out and talk to the people, to educate them so that they in fact do follow the rules as far as like, you know, social distancing. I also want to thank as far as like listening to all our concerns and having a, a measured but a proactive approach to slowly moving things as much back to normal as we can hope under the circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor Protem, you have something else?
Yeah, just one more thing. Certainly, we've seen, Chief, that the governor's office comes up with, you know, every 15 days, every 14 days, they have a new issue, a new governor's orders. Basically, we're still in a stay-at-home order, but the phasing of businesses and other kinds of opportunities, hotels and et cetera, have been phased in. But technically, we're still supposed to be a community that's staying at home. Is that correct?
Yes, in terms of, there's no recommendations in terms of vacationing and leaving our home. They still want things relegated to essential activity. But as we lighten the restrictions, that activity begins to expand in terms of the things that we can do now, now outside of our home with social distancing guidelines. And that's the most important thing to remember.
And this current ordinance is in, or order is in until what, the end of June now?
I did not see the expiration date. I do know it went into effect on June 11th. Typically, they have an expiration or a date of about 30 days, but they typically get a minute every so often. So I do not know the current expiration date on this current order.
So thank you very much, Chief. I just wanted to kind of end this presentation with looking forward and leaning more toward encouraging our public to exercise social responsibility. And so that we, when we do see increased lightening of the restrictions, that we can depend on our public to act socially responsible, to follow the guidelines, and to still continue to protect themselves against the virus. There's got to be a handover at some point, handover that responsibility to our residents and say, listen, it's up to you now to do this. And, you know, I don't know if the county's moving in that direction, but there's got to be a point where we take on responsibility for our own health and safety. Have to comment on that. Okay, anybody else who acts socially responsible, to follow the guideline?
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on to our next presentation, we have a presentation by Don Villafana, who's gonna talk about our street scheme plan and our sidewalk maintenance management program report. Go ahead, Don.
A good evening. I've got to be made host, and I've got to share the screen.
Don, you should have host privileges.
Okay. All right. All right, here we go. This is the sidewalk inspection program and update, which was, we were asked to present to you. Whoops. What's going on? Okay, here we go. Yeah, the purpose of the sidewalk inspection program is to identify hazards, to report them, and schedule repairs so that, you know, it, there's no potential risk to our residents and the visitors. And we are inspecting our sidewalks on an annual basis. And Miranda Park repair, we just finished this. There were a number of areas, the sidewalk in the park that were cracked and uplifted. These areas were, were removed, tree roots cut back, root barrier installed, and then the concrete was replaced. And this project was in the CIP, and it was funded by the General Fund. Walking inspections by public works staff. We have our staff out there. We broke the city up into zones, and we set priorities. Our priorities were the schools, the four elementary schools in our, in our city, and the senior residential communities. And you see the stars on the presentation. Those are the areas that we have already inspected and repaired. You can see, and when we're out there inspecting the sidewalks, we're looking for hazards. And we also look at other potential threats to the walking surface, nearby trees or unusual uses for. And on my March 16th occasion, the quarterly update, we talked about this. And again, we, we broke the, we've been inspecting the sidewalks. And you can see the four elementary schools that are in the city that we have inspected. And this, these are the repairs we've done in those locations. Around Wainimi Elementary School, we did seven repairs, Bard Elementary 2 and Parkview Elementary 1. And the stars on the, on the photographs, those represent where the inspections were done, where the repairs were done. Again, the city was broken up into zones. One and six have been inspected. Zone 2 is underway. After inspection, we review the inspection reports. Then we'll determine what type of repair is needed. Then our engineering division will then schedule the repairs. And this is our inspection program. We're out there and, and then once we inspect, we decide what type of repair is needed. You've got grinding, or you have total removal and replacement. And these are examples of where we're doing, where we've done that. We prepared an inspection maintenance program handbook, and that's available on our website. And the link is on the screen. And with the exception of residential or commercial driveway approaches, the city will repair and pay for sidewalk repairs in the roadway, in the road right-of-way. And if you would like, if the residents or anyone would like more information, that website is, that link is on our city website. And that's, are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Villafana. Are there any questions for Mr. Villafana on the street sidewalk program? Yes, Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Villafana, for this update. So on the link that we have on the website, is that a place where people could actually say, hey, you know, when you come into my area, can you take a look at the street or that street? Could they make recommendations there?
No, that's just informational. There, there are ways that they can report. They can, they could email and report hazard.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Gama?
How are the inspections being conducted?
We have people, public works staff, going systematically through the zones that we've laid out. They're walking the sidewalk, they're taking photographs of the sidewalks. They're measuring any, you know, any vertical offsets. They're following the recommendations that JPIA has set. They're following those guidelines in our inspection, when we're out there inspecting.
Yes, that's what I was curious about, if they're actually walking, because I know that was a recommendation. When it comes to the thresholds, you know, this whole issue started up almost a year ago. And I was wondering, because we had identified areas that the city refused to, and the ordinance was adopted. And I want to know, have those notices gone out to homeowners yet? Because there were some significant defects, and I noticed a few in my areas that involve the threshold. So are, when you had identified a threshold that connects to a straightaway, are you aggressively moving on those to get those fixed as well?
We are inspecting and repairing anything that is not a driveway approach or the adjoining panel. And when we see a driveway or an adjoining panel, we will document it and we'll put a remedial repair on it. We're still working with community development to provide, to get a notice procedure in place. We just have not gotten that done with the pandemic. We've shifted resources. But we are repairing and replacing sidewalk and grinding sidewalk in the public right-of-way.
Right, but I'm trying to understand how aggressive are we? Because you're documenting hazards that the city's not gonna repair. So, you know, we need to get that notice out to the homeowner. And I'm wondering if we could get that going because the, the net effect is hazards are remaining in the public domain.
Well, we are, we're mitigating those hazards. We'll put cold patch, we'll mitigate them. We're not doing the permanent repair on it. We're mitigating it. And yes, I'll be circling back with Tony Stewart in the next couple of weeks. And hopefully, we'll be getting those notices out very soon to the homeowners.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Rollins?
Yeah, first of all, I, I want to thank you for making, doing the work that you did at Miranda Park. I think some of the comments by the community about getting some vitality into that, well, if they can walk, if they can walk safely and through that, that park, I think that adds to the activity that goes on to that park. And then I want to thank you for your systematic approach of going to the various different sectors of the city. I think like, you know, good safe sidewalks not only increase the safety, but it will also increase the look of the city and ideally the house value. And then the final thing is, how much money, and maybe you know, how much money is set aside for side right, report sidewalk repairs this year? And how much has been spent?
We put 100, there's $150,000 in the two-year budget. We spent approximately $97,000 at Miranda Park. So there's still funds available for the next fiscal year, which will be taking, starting in July. And that's money in the CIP for areas not in the public right-of-way. Anything within the public right-of-way, along the streets, that comes. Anything within the public right of way, along the streets, that comes SB1 funds or gas tax funds. So that is covered and we're, we are aggressively taking care of that. It's areas like the beach, walkway, bubbling springs, anywhere else that's not in the public, not in the public streets, has to be funded with general fund money. But we have about $60,000 left in what was budgeted for sidewalk repair with general fund money.
Well, thank you for the work you've done and I look forward to even more improvements. Good job.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Villafana? Mr. Villafana, thank you for all the hard work that you and your, your people do. It's hard being out there in the elements, I know, the heat, the, the wind and everything. And you guys, you guys have a tough job, so you have my support and thank you again for your report.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, let's now move on to our consent calendar. Go ahead and read the items. Item number four, approved minutes of the city council for the regular meeting of June 1st, 2020. The recommendations to approve the minutes. Item number five, receive and file the finance cash dispersments for May 22, 2020 through June 5th, 2020. And the recommendation is receive and file first months. Item number six is a grand jury response to human trafficking report. The recommendation is to authorize the mayor to execute the response to the Ventura County, the Ventura Grand, it should be County Grand Jury Report on Human Trafficking in Ventura County. May I have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar?
Move, Bravo.
Second.
Second.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I would like to discuss the cash dispersments. I have a couple of questions.
Okay, so are you asking to pull that item from the agenda for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to amend the motion to approve items four and six. Can I have a motion, an amendment to that motion to approve only four and six, please?
I'll move, I'll move forward.
Second, okay, can I get a roll call vote?
Sorry, Mayor, I missed who made the first and second motion on that second amended.
I was number one.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Seconded that?
I had Councilmember Burke for the first, I just didn't catch the second motion.
Okay, who had seconded that motion? Councilman Rollins, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Munoz Knop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hernandez?
Yes. Okay, those items have been approved. Let's now go to the financed cash dispersments for May 22 through June 5th, 2020. Go ahead, Councilman Gama.
Thank you. On page five, there's all the payments to CalPERS contributions. And then there's listing of CalPERS health insurance. So I just want to verify that the CalPERS contributions are retirement payments and I guess, and there, there's a multiple, multiple amount of entries, 25,000, 26,000, 12,000, 1500, 25,000, 25,000. So I'm trying to understand which ones are for current retirees and which ones are for employees in the pipeline to be retired. Because the sum total of all those payments is in excess of $300,000, I believe. And as you all know, I'm always geeking out on the unfunded liability payments. And I've identified those in our upcoming budget discussion. So, and I, and I understand it may be difficult to answer this question right now, but I would just like to see more detail. And maybe as a future practice, that we could have cash dispersments not in the consent agenda so that, you know, because we've had discussions about some of the constraints of our system. And I just think it's really important for us to be on top of our payments and understanding and ask questions. So anyways, so my, my question is about CalPERS contributions and is there a way to identify unfunded liability payments versus somebody that's in the employee pipeline?
Do we have Mr. McDonald online to answer that or?
Yeah, can, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, most of those ones that he was referring to, I think it starts right on the third line after Aflac. And the CalPERS contributions, those are active employees. And that section there, the, the ones that say CalPERS Health are for the health insurance. And it has the different either invoice or line that they're charged to. The contributions for retirees, the employee contribution, that they bill us at the beginning of the year. And you can either choose to pay it in a lump sum or pay that monthly. These are not those, those unfunded liability payments that would be retirees, which I think you're referring to, Councilmember Gama.
You're on mute, Miss Councilman Gama. You want to take yourself, thank you.
Yes, so then when we have our budget, budget discussion later on and we see a entry for unfunded liability payment, then these are not associated with these, these payments that we're looking at right here.
No, and these, if you look, most of those date periods before there are a two-week period. So they, that, that is my cue off that it's, it's payroll period. And like new safe is probably a new safety employee, it just kind of truncates all that. We made some modifications to the last one, which was, was without argument, very confusing. So we put in, we had to change the orientation from portrait to land and added in the couple of lines to show you where it was either being charged to a different account number, project number, invoice number, or even PO number. So this one definitely has a lot more detail.
Yes, and details are, and thank you, because it, yeah, it, it's, it's still a little murky, but I, I think I understand what you're telling me. And when we get into the budget, you know, I'll have a couple of questions regarding unfunded liability payments that show up in the budget and, and, and so I really appreciate that information. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, yes, Madam Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, one thing, Stephen or Councilmember Gama, I just want to point out is the prior page, it actually has retiring medical for a few of the folks that we are paying directly for their medical. Can you see that? Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that is separate from pension liability. So, because I do, I did notice that. And so there are some entries for former police individuals who apparently have lifetime medical or something. But yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, can we get a motion in a second to approve the dispersment report, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Munoz Knop?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number five.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving now to item seven. This is a public hearing. The hearing is now open. It is 8:07 PM. The hearing is the levy and collection of the annual assessments for assessment district number 87-1, assessment district number 1-1, and assessment district number 96-3, an agreement with the Ventura County Auditor Controller for billing of direct assessments. Do any members of the council have any conflicts to disclose? Madam Clerk, do you have proof of publication fired by law?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you. Do we have a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Yes, we do.
Okay, will staff please present the report? I believe this, you're back, Don, Mr. Villafana, Director of Public Works.
Yes, thank you. This is the public hearing for the three assessment districts. We have the lighting, the drainage, and we have the lighting and maintenance, lighting maintenance districts. And we're here to answer any questions or respond to any public comments.
I have no public comments. Does council have any questions of Mr. Villafana? Okay, hearing done, you're, we're asking for, if there are no further discussions, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The time is 8:09 PM. We have before us the recommendation to adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Port Winemee, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the lighting maintenance assessment district number 87-1 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021, pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, and adopt the resolution of the city council, the city of Port Winemee, California, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Parkway and Midian Assessment District number 91-1 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021, pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. And three, adopt the resolution of the city council, of the city of Port Winemee, California, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Port Winemee Drainage Maintenance Assessment District number 95-3 for the fiscal year beginning July 20, excuse me, beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021, pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Excellent.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Burke and a second by Councilman Rollins. May I ask Clerk for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama? Mayor Protem Munoz Knop?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Villafana. Okay, we're moving on to business items. Our next, our first business item is under the City Managers Department. And item number eight is an authorization to enter into wastewater agreement with Oxnard Harbor District. The recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into wastewater agreement with the Oxnard Harbor District to establish a wastewater billing rate that accurately reflects the district's wastewater stream from the port. I'd like to ask staff to present the report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. What you have before you tonight is an agreement that will establish how we bill the port for their wastewater discharge into our system. This is essentially a cleanup item. We've had two previous agreements, the last being done in 2010. What the formula that existed in that agreement actually accounted for some meters that at the time were part, were owned under the SPA. And those meters have since transferred ownership over to the port. So this agreement accounts for that change. And now we'll put the billing rate with the water usage based out of that. Previously, we, there was the rate or the usage that was monitored meter. Then we had to subtract out what was the SPA property and then account for that. Now that everything's under their ownership, this cleans the formula up. And basically, it's the same thing without, with less math involved now and it cleans the formula up.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Camarillo? Yes, Madam Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Camarillo. So you're saying it's a cleanup issue. Has this not been done since we sold that property, that SPA property to the port?
There, there were some items that we were doing manually, but now this will, with the agreement being cleaned up, it will, it'll, it'll just become part of that, of this new formula now. So it was being done, but it was going to, there was other calculations that really weren't necessary if we just had a new agreement and cleaned the formula up.
Okay, so this deducted 23,000 of that cost. You're, you're saying that the port has actually paid that, but we've come up with those calculations in a different kind of way outside of this update on the agreement?
Well, this is just based off of, I received information from our department on what the average annual billings have been. So of course, that will change slightly depending upon how much water that actually passes through for their use. So the bill will go up maybe or down maybe, depending on how much water they're actually taking through their meter. But this is simply based off of what the last couple of years' average annual water use was.
So let me clarify it. We have been receiving money from the port for these kinds of bills, right?
Correct.
It hasn't been where, we're trying to establish it now because it should have transferred over when we did sell the SPA property.
No, 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 we have been getting these collected. It's just like, as I mentioned, it's been some additional steps that we've had to take in order to do that because of how the formula was previously before those meters were transferred ownership.
Okay.
So this is a cleanup. And I'll add to that the Oxnard Harbor District's already taken a look at this. Their council's taken a look at it. The reason why you have it before you without me having anything in there saying that they've approved it is because they got their opinion that they did not have to do that prior to having it come before you.
Well, I appreciate you always, you know, trying to see how we could shore everything up. And I appreciate this coming to council for approval. Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Camarillo? Okay, hearing done, may I have a motion in a second?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Munoz Knop?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Camarillo. Thank you for your good work. Our next item is item nine, resolution adopting the revised annual operating budget for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 and establishing the annual appropriations limit for the fiscal year 2020 to 21. The recommendations to adopt a resolution of the city council adopting the revised annual operating budget for fiscal year 2021 and a resolution approving and adopting the annual appropriations limit. May I ask staff to please present the report?
Let me have the PowerPoint loaded up. Rich Rollins, you might want to stretch your legs while you have the moment.
I'm going to get a cramp. I'm not going to be that long, don't worry. Last two council meetings, I've gotten a leg cramp, so so far so good. I will do my best to make sure that doesn't happen.
I suppose a bad idea if we took a little stretch break.
Well, I'll keep it light on the presentation and then we can get heavy into the details when we get through.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go ahead and begin, next slide. Tonight, we'll have in front of you a summary of what we're going to do. We're going to receive and discuss the revised budget that was approved and adopted last June. And also the second item we will do, which is an annual GAN appropriations limit. We filed the one for last year, but we have to have growth figures in order to do this year's. So this would, we would do even in a two-year budget like we have. And then the third and last item, we'll approve and adopt a revised budget and that GAN appropriation limit and move forward from there. Next slide. The main thing in our budget highlights is dealing with the sales and property tax and revenue impacts. with pandemic. We wanted to get that definitely updated as much as we could. We also had two major items that changed since the adoption on June twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen of our original operating budget. We had the two MOUs approved by council. I think it was on July fifteenth, little under a couple of weeks after the budget was adopted. We also had our capital improvement project budget approved in November. So we've incorporated both of those items in there, which were the major items in there, along with the additional revenue impacts that we've had to get a more accurate up-to-date projection for next year. Thanks. What we have here is just kind of an overview of the city overall and citywide. Citywide is kind of just a reference thing because that combines all the grant funds and different things. So it's not like a corporation combined statement or anything. But we we still have a general fund surplus of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand and anticipating all of our estimates to the revenue and fulfilling the CIP projects, which are represented at about one point five million. Next slide. When we went through our revenue projections, the three biggest ones are sales tax, property taxes, and other taxes, franchise fees and whatnot. We've taken those into consideration and gotten estimates from our advisors and then taken what we also have out there to come up with those. On the next slide, you'll see our general fund revenues kind of in a detailed nature. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Were we frozen?
All right, Ken, yeah, the the document is.
Ken, while we're. Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Councilman Gama.
So you talked about revenues two slides ago and my question is expenses, additional expenses not anticipated before COVID. So what are we trying to to estimate those and?
You're on mute, Councilman Gama. We can't hear you.
If you could elaborate on how we're factoring in the increased expenditures due to COVID.
The the real direct impact expenses that we have now are kind of the overtime related, but we won't really be able to have a direct impact on the expense side and what would be will be taking that up for any grant reimbursements. And so we're going to have to kind of see what those requirements are before we finalize that. So we really haven't gotten that yet. We've been looking at what kind of expenses that we'll need in order to operate, but we haven't really separated them out for COVID. We've kind of taken that into consideration, the revenue projections, and looked at that.
So in the short term, we may have a pretty good hit, but I know mandated cost recovery takes some time. So then we'll we'll be able to pull some of those recoveries at a later date.
Yeah, but we would end up doing, we would close out our year end because it's not likely that they would have to get us that binding grant letter by September so we could include it in our statement. So we could very well end the year at a small surplus and then get this revenue in 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 one or two years from now. And then it would be revenue on those future years, not attributable to that year, but it would end up showing up then. It kind of has a catch-up part.
Councilman Gama, this is City Manager Connors, if I may add some some context. We've been tracking with a very highly calibrated financial impacts, what relative to costs, including overtime. We have pre-filled out applications for grants specifically with FEMA and we have indications that the CARE Act allocation to this city is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So although, you know, the the costs are being executed today, the recovery revenue that is the potential revenue may not be available to us for some time. We think that it will be reconciled and balanced net neutral.
So since we're back up, should I continue?
I think Councilman Burke has a question.
Yeah, I I did have a question and an observation for City Manager and for our CFO. At the transportation agencies that we are members of Gold Coast and Ventura County Transportation Commission, there's quite a bit of federal as well as state as well as state dollars that are coming in right now to prop up these operations. They're currently not charging any fees, you know, no, no having to pay to take a bus, et cetera. Well, as we're looking at our own budget outwards, we are anticipating that perhaps in two years from now, maybe three, that there's really going to be some severe problems balancing the budgets. Right now, we're these agencies are living off these grants, et cetera. Is there any impact for us that we have to look forward to, not tomorrow, but in two years from now, regarding how we're balancing our books? I mean, I think we're making pretty good money with the businesses that we have to keep us going, but we're not living off of any grants, are we?
No, and we're not. I mean, I I really don't like to kind of rub it into my neighbors and colleagues. We really have, I mean, everybody, you know, cursed us that cannabis was going to be short-lived and and everything, but it couldn't have come at a more perfect time. I mean, in a slide or two down the way, I've got one showing the dips and how we are running deficits and how even through our capital plans, we're still able to show operating surpluses, which we hadn't hadn't for years. So I mean, I'd like to take but it's so many items, you know, that the public passing of Measure U, the supporting of the cannabis industry and getting all that stuff going, it's all come together as kind of like a perfect storm.
Well, I I do recall when I first joined the council, one of the genuine concerns that we had to ask ourselves is what happens when a city goes bankrupt? I mean, what are what what happens? Because we were facing some serious financial problems that we are not anywhere near today. And obviously, the cannabis business has had a lot to do with that. Increase in business at the port has been helpful, Measure U and that sales tax. We've we've turned a corner financially and I'm just glad to hear that, you know, unlike other agencies, we're not balancing our books right now on grant dollars.
Well, and and also, you know, this is is something that usually I don't get council support on the last cities that I've been at. But when we have discussions about unfunded liabilities, these are not things in our one- and two-year budget. These are in our five- and ten-year budget. And to get people to address that, when I have a council that's listening to me and one that's that is supportive on this topic is me, it makes it real easy to show long-term benefit of it and and addressing it will make future councils really appreciate the actions that we're doing today.
Thank you.
Well, um, it was if there's any more questions, I can take some more.
You can go. I think I'll just wait with my questions, but go ahead and proceed.
Okay, well, what we have here is the general fund revenues. This kind of shows the real meat and potatoes from the current year projections that we have to what we're projecting with next year. You know, in some of these items, the sales tax items decreases, those are part pandemic, part from we got some higher one-time revenues in the career. But we've been real conservative. The the Harbor District port decline in revenue, we got from their most updated information there. So I think we have a real strong conservative revenue picture that we we shouldn't see any surprises, but we will get updates on these revenue items in probably three-month quarterly fashion. So if anything does come back, I'm anticipating we'll probably come back, oh, maybe January for a final mid-year for this next year and deal with any any changes or updates that we have from that that period. Go ahead and go to the next slide.
I got a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Ken, January, shouldn't you know, our fiscal year begins when?
July. So this this budget that we're discussing now really begins this July. So it's typically, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having this budget discussion, but because we adopted the MOUs, because we adopted this CIP and because of the pandemic, all three of those kind of came together that it made it worthy of studying. Usually you have the two-year budget, so you don't have to put that level of detail into it. But, you know, it was still more efficient than a nine-year budget because we were we were only looking at revenue items impacted by, you know, anything that we had pandemic-wise or those other two big items.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Councilman Rollins?
Have you taken into the account, I was looking at the cannabis objections, not only in the next year, but in the following, I have our our neighbors next door, I think, have approved now eight retail lets for the coming year. Are we concerned at all about the impact to our revenue sales in cannabis?
We will definitely watch it and because we get on the majority of our dispensaries, we get monthly operating meetings and and whatnot from them, we should know if if they're really seeing it. We've seen some some decreases or some declines in their sales numbers, but no one has excessive. It'd be one month will be up and then the next month be down, but generally quarter to quarter, they've all been growing. So it's really good signs. I don't know how long it would last. And if I did, I would probably have that crystal ball capitalized. This next slide here shows kind of our historical revenue trend with those red lines kind of indicating some major revenue, either milestones or hiccups, you know, with the big one being the first one is that Department of Finance not it disallowed the loan between the city and the redevelopment agency. That caused a loss of principal and loss of interest payments that were coming in. So that was recognized there. When eighteen nineteen first started, we had the last quarter of the year that had Measure U and the cannabis revenue had started up. So that gave us a positive projection. The current year, we have this large because of that SPA loan payback, which will increase the general fund unassigned reserve balance and allow us to do all those capital projects, which are proposed in the next one. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And one more. This one here kind of highlights an overall for overall expenditures and then points out that the one point five five nine million of capital projects and the new MOUs. And there was, I think, two or three positions that we have that were approved subsequent to last last option. One is the emergency preparedness manager, two part-time custodians, and the one additional fiscal assistant for my finance department. Next slide. This one here kind of goes through the same kind of historical expenditure expenditures and year-over-year changes and kind of it would relate and link to those same items in in the past. Next slide.
I think Councilman Gama has a question.
Oh, yeah.
Can you go back to the previous slide, please? I'm sorry.
With the expenditures?
Yes, right there. Probably a real simple answer, but expenditures for FY twenty nineteen twenty increased thirty-eight percent.
Yeah, and that's because of all the capital projects that we've got going in the in the current year. Whether I'm pretty confident that we won't be able to execute them all. So it won't be as, you know, it won't be to that full twenty-three million, six hundred thousand projected number, but that's what we have budgeted. And so it's it's showing our projection of the expenditures high, but it's because of the aggressiveness of the of the capital project.
Okay, and then so the adopted twenty twenty-one budget.
That was what was adopted last June, a year.
First was the proposed. Okay, so this leads me into the unfunded. Is that difference the amount of money that we were contemplating putting into the?
No. What in in that year-over-year variance is kind of a little misleading there because it shows the twenty-three million in the current year projected, the original adopted and showing that was three point seven million less. And then it was twenty-one million is what we have proposed. So now it's back up one point, one point nine. But that includes all the all the capital projects.
Thank you.
In the general fund. This next slide here goes into the total revenues and expenditures and shows how most of the year points on the left show the expenditures above the green line, which is the revenue until that changes at around seventeen, sixteen, seventeen is the first year where we ended up with a surplus. And that was when we got all those cuts in. Just after that is when I got here and then we continued having operational surpluses since then. Next slide. This one here kind of shows how the general fund unassigned fund balance can increase with both budgeted surpluses and certain assets changing value, like when that SPA loan is paid, it's not it's when it's a SPA loan, it's not unassigned, it's committed that loan from another fund. So when that fund pays it back, that balance now goes up as unassigned. So that paying back of that loan ends up increasing our unassigned fund balance. And right here gives us a projection of where we project to be at the end of this month and where we project to be at the June of twenty twenty-one. And the next slide. And one more. And this is kind of the conclusions that we had from that study and from the unassigned, I mean, from the budget that we have in front of you. It has a general fund surplus of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. It's showing our projected year-end fund balance for the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-one at thirteen point six million, and that will represent a sixty-two point seven percent at the end of that year. So what Councilmember Gama was referring to, that we were talking about using some of these reserves awards, those unfunded liabilities, that's where those amounts would come from. If we were to take, let's say, because I just looked at the number, if we were to take five million out of the general fund and put it towards that, that would take that sixty-two percent number and bring it down closer to thirty-nine, forty percent. Next slide. And that one is just a summary of what we need to do. And now I think if we have any detailed questions on some of the budget, we can get into that or any anything else anybody has.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDonald. Any questions for our director? Yes, Councilman Gama. You're on mute.
So the information that you provided us, I guess I'm going to reference page twelve of the of the revised budget for twenty twenty-one.
Is that the PDF copy or the printed copy?
It's the printed coffee copy, I'm sorry.
That's right. Well, because the one has the title page counted in it, so the budget's forty pages, but if you count the title, it's forty-one on the PDF.
Okay, yeah, twelve and forty.
Okay.
That's good housekeeping there, Ken. And I know it's always difficult when I start when anybody references some that you made. But anyways, bottom line is what's really nice about this information and what's really nice about the the multi-year budgeting process is that you can see where expenditures are going. And so it really gives a good visual visual of this unfunded liability and what it's actually doing. And and the the cool about this report is it breaks it out by employee groups. So I went through and I highlighted all the unfunded liability payments and in police administration in a in twenty eighteen nineteen, it was a hundred and four thousand dollars. And then twenty twenty-one, it's a hundred and fifty-four thousand. So that that's a that's a pretty good increase, but it's it's much lower than some of the other ones. So if we go to the next group of employees, patrol investigations. So if we go to the next group of employees, patrol investigations, you got funded liability and that's on page thirteen. In twenty eighteen, it was four hundred and forty-six thousand. And, um, in this, this next year, this next budget is going to be six hundred and eighty-five thousand. The next group, eighteen nineteen, eighty-seven thousand. And, and now it's up to a hundred and forty-five thousand. So, um, I'm just trying to make the point that these payments are not going to go down for eleven years. They're going to continue to rise. And, um, with this COVID stuff and the stock market wild fluctuations, um, you know, if, it, it just depends how close CalPERS gets to their investment target as to how much, um, our payments will actually go up. And so, excuse me. Got a little excited. So we won't know until CalPERS does their actuarial reporting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
When do we anticipate their actual, actuarial reports being completed?
Um, I think they traditionally put them out consistently every year. And I think they're dated in July, but they may not come available till August or September. I, I'd have to look. But they're pretty consistent within a two to four week period every year when they post those out. And they're definitely after the date of their, um, of their valuation period too.
So for the council, I would like to, um, when we receive those reports, suggest that we, um, ask Mr. Constant to come back and evaluate those new actuariales and then begin that process of trying to, um, fund our unfunded liabilities to the benefit of future councils. Um, and, um, it might be a, a really good time to do that considering where we are financially. But, um, if, if y'all recall, we had a very long presentation and, and it probably went way too long. But, um, there's a couple of recommendations and, um, and I hope that we could follow up on those recommendations once we receive the, the, the actuarial studies that CalPERS will be putting out soon.
Yeah, I know we were, we were looking at, um, trying to study that and get some of that done. But, um, we've kind of been sidetracked with some of these other items. Uh, but you know, that was one of the things that Mr. Conson had said is we, we've been addressing it, but we don't have a real, um, detailed strategy addressing it. And I think that's what we need to do. And I think, um, we were trying to get some, um, representatives from CalPERS to come out and give us their side. We have the other side from pars that has their own vested interests and just trying to wade through that, that information to make sure we're making the right decision because we do have, you know, unfunded liability. We have old former pension obligation bonds that, that are still being paid too. So there's a lot of the past and the future that really we need to kind of analyze together to make sure that the future is kind of covered.
Councilman Gama, this is the city manager Connors. Uh, we did have a suspense target date to give you, uh, and provide an investment strategy, uh, to cover these unfunded liabilities and also to, uh, advance and deploy, um, reserves, uh, towards that end. Sadly, we haven't been able to get to it. Obviously the distractions of a variety of different, uh, unprecedented events have, have delayed that. Um, but we'll probably wrap that up into the, you know, the person's actuary, actuary, I, I can't even say it. And give you a report that includes that.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. McDonald? All right. May I have a hearing then? See no hands? Anybody? I don't have everybody's picture on here. Okay, good. Uh, may I have a motion in a second to adopt a resolution to, um, adopt the revised annual operating budget in twenty twenty-one and a resolution approving and adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty twenty-one?
Move to approve.
Councilman Rollins moves.
I'll second that.
Councilman Berg seconds. And may we have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Munosnap?
Yes.
And Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Great presentation. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. We really appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, uh, item number ten, extension of economic development consultant contract, the Charis navigating, uh, Steve Kenny, uh, contract. And Mr. City Manager, do you have a report on this?
Yeah, the report is posted. I'll, I'll make some comments and, uh, and then, uh, welcome your questions. Mr. Kenny is a principal to Charis navigating, has been supporting the city since January twenty seventeen. I believe this is the third contract extension. Um, um, the, the contract, uh, extension today is similar to previous ones. There's a fifteen thousand dollar cap on it, um, and managed, uh, directly and specifically by me in pursuit of a variety of different economic development objectives. In the past, uh, Mr. Kenny has been involved of a variety of different, uh, things that, uh, that go well beyond the, you know, the, 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 the very narrow scope of the Chamber of Commerce, uh, which is not as, uh, I, I guess, not as fruitful, uh, in Port winey is, as, as, as maybe others. Um, so, uh, Mr. Kenny was very instrumental in, 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 and write a different property, uh, opportunities and considerations, either sale, or deployment use of properties. In particular, um, he was, uh, in the, again, the, the breach, uh, when it came to the cannabis businesses. He's been involved with at least twenty-four applications specifically addressing and validating the financial capacity and component of the applications. And then shepherding and steering the activation of those, uh, accounts into a full, uh, production and, and, and business. Um, he's in, in a couple, uh, ongoing ones. Um, and he's also been instrumental in a variety of different, uh, visioning and strategy components of repurposing, reusing, maximizing the potential for a variety of different, uh, city resources, buildings, facilities and, uh, and capabilities, uh, including partnerships, uh, internal and outside our, our, uh, boundaries. This particular extension is even more, uh, pressing, um, because of, uh, a couple of things that he's involved with right now and the things that will, he'll be involved in very short order. One of those is, uh, really a dedicated effort, uh, to support local businesses in survival, um, initially stabilization. Um, and then, uh, to continue to grow, uh, as this pandemic, uh, releases his grips on their ability to, to generate, uh, commerce and prop, uh, profit. There's really no function within city government that allows a familiarity, a familiarity and a fidelity with, uh, the three hundred, uh, and thirty known. When I say known, I mean, we actually have contact information for, um, we have reached out, uh, with owners and GMs. Um, and we've engaged them in, in ways that we could support them, um, getting through this particular economic challenge. And we probably have another hundred or so, um, that we don't necessarily have. Part of the reason for that is the relationship with HDL and our contract with, with them, uh, they, they process business license and then report sales tax. So it escapes, um, our, 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 our natural, um, uh, I guess, viewpoint. And we have to request for reports, um, and go through intermediaries in order to get that information. So in, uh, direct support of those by, you know, we talked about a little bit, uh, earlier with Chief Salinas. The big thing is a twenty million dollar package executed through the Ventura County Community Foundation. And it's split between a variety of different, um, uh, funding objectives, uh, either rent, uh, or payroll, uh, for the most part. And, um, um, in order to do that, the first thing businesses need is to attest, uh, that they're ready to do this again. A lot of businesses aren't, uh, are contemplating whether or not to do that mainly because of an eighty-five page template that the, uh, the county has used as the, 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 the guiding, um, platform by which they, they do their risk, uh, assessment. So the first thing, uh, we've done is to create an economic recovery group, uh, led an execution, um, uh, by Mr. Kenny, uh, and supported by, uh, uh, Mayor Protem Schnapp, uh, in order to, uh, facilitate and optimize our support to local business. The first step is to, to streamline that thing and then, uh, provide resources, hands-on, uh, points of contact, both interim to the city, uh, specifically with Mayor Kenny, but also with the resources that exist in Ventura County. That creates the, 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 the first and important, um, threshold by which, uh, we can, um, uh, queue a variety of different businesses up to be in line for these, these grants, not loans, but grants. The second part of it is to help them fulfill the risk management thing and make sure that they're cleared to go. And then the application process to follow. We expect that to be up and operable in about, um, a, a week, uh, if not earlier. And, um, uh, in Mr. Kenny's case, he also has relationships. And, um, we have secured, uh, the ability to inform, um, and participate in, in how those funds are allocated and distributed. Um, he's involved with Ventura County Economic Development Association. He's involved with the Ventura Economic Development Collaborative. And so, um, he is at the table where our interests are going to be best served. Further on down the road in the recovery, um, we will continue that relationship and we will continue to develop, um, other businesses. I will give a, a update on, on Red Mule, um, through executive summary, um, initially, and then the next council meeting. But that is, uh, on, 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 on schedule for a four months to full activation. As, as a business that, uh, again, uh, Mr. Kenny is project management for. The bigger thing is going to be kind of in the out years. We are envisioning and embarking on a strategic plan that, uh, that has at its core on the economic side, a, uh, a, a, a development economic ecosystem, um, and a, uh, and an effort to diversify and create a portfolio of, uh, business interests that avoid one of the, one of the issues that was addressed in the budget, uh, meeting. And that was this single, um, uh, business slash concentration in terms of revenue generation. We fully, uh, we fully expect there'll be some impacts from other communities developing their own cannabis industry. Um, but in discussions with, uh, some of the locals, but also looking at some of the, 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 the business strategies around there. Um, Port Winey has the, you know, the, the potential to be a hub for distribution to other parts of the state. And that, uh, that creates an opportunity that, uh, through prior experience, um, that other cities may not have. So we want to make sure that we, uh, number one, treat businesses like customers, embrace them, support them and make this not only the friendly city by the sea in terms of our beach and other resource, but also for a business community. And if we do that right, um, uh, Mr. Kenny is going to support that, um, in all shapes and forms. That concludes my presentation. Subject to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions? I have one regarding, um, reimbursement for Mr. Kenny's, uh, contract costs. And some of them are, some of the duties he's performing are COVID-related. Are you isolating those costs for reimbursement?
The, uh, the answer is, uh, to this date, we haven't. We've just been paying the contract. However, um, they are, uh, the, the invoices are specific billable things. Um, he has just been activated as emergency recovery group as of two weeks ago, and those will be included in our recovery costs.
Okay. Yeah, I would encourage that we do that because those are certainly eligible costs. So thank you for that. Um, Mayor Protem and then, uh, Councilman Gama.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so thank you, Mr. City Manager for an excellent presentation. I think this is the, this is by far the most, um, informative when this contract has come to us. And really a recap of what Mr. Kenny has done, but projecting out, you know, how you're going to be working with him. And I appreciate the detail here. I think he brings real value to the team with you and Tony and is an extension for us. A business ambassador and ombudsman. And I really appreciate the extra effort that, um, he and you have and Tony have put together in order to help our businesses reopen and seeing what kind of needs they may have and helping fast track this, you know, what seems like a really burdensome process to, to get their doors back open. And I really appreciate all the detail. Thank you.
Councilman Gama?
I recall when, um, the twenty seventeen contract was initiated, it was initiated with great fanfare. I think it was, um, interim city manager Baker and, um, clearly we're at a time where revenue was a problem and they identified all these different properties that could be developed. And, um, and so we're going to focus on that. And, um, of course, the cannabis was coming into being. And I think, uh, Mr. Kenny has been extremely successful with the, um, with the implementation of the, um, dispensaries a few years. But one of the problems I have with this contract is that, um, I don't know where the line is drawn between our community development director and Mr. Kenny's work. And I do appreciate, and it's super important, no doubt about it, and it's probably going to be a very intensive work to get all these businesses back on track. Because, you know, you can see a lot of them are, are struggling and we know that. Um, but at the same time, we have so many empty buildings that we need to, we need to be really effective. For example, Starbucks left us for the city of Oxnard. And their old building has been vacant now for a very long time. Kung noodles. I don't even know what happened with that, but they got a beautiful, brand-new sign. Well, actually Starbucks moved down the parking lot. That's right. But they also opened one in Oxnard as well. But, um, but Kung Fu, Kung Fu noodles is right next to the new Starbucks. And it's been vacant for well over a year, maybe even longer. And they can't, I don't know what the issue is why they can't get their business up and running. Um, and, um, Mary's Market is still empty. Um, you know, Brat Motors has problems. I mean, we, we have a lot of legacy problems with, with businesses not coming to Port Winey. So, um, I just want to suggest perhaps maybe at some point we could try to revitalize those vacant buildings that need an occupant to generate tax revenue for us. So, um, and then, you know, the, the other thing that, you know, we just talked about, industrial way has not worked out. Um, the blue building has not worked out. Um, Red Mule, we're still waiting for them to work out. And so I'm hoping that with these areas, we could find a new direction, a new energy and a new aggressive approach to bring new businesses in.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Gama. Anybody else? Yes, Councilman Rollins.
Yes, yeah. Um, I will be looking forward to, um, uh, Mr. Kenny's approach to, um, uh, expanding the small businesses and enhancing their ability to, um, do well in the city. Um, I'm, I'm looking forward to see, but I would like to see at a future, um, council meeting to be able to see what our approach is on those various different things and what our specific priorities are going to be. I know you mentioned in generic forms, some of the directions that we're going in, but I'm looking forward to seeing some of the specifics that we're doing on that.
Okay. Um, thank you, Councilman Rollins. Madam Mayor, Protem?
Yeah, I just wanted, um, help clarify some of the things that staff does is that, um, they don't necessarily look to fill empty buildings. Those that actually own the properties and what their leasing companies are doing. And, you know, perhaps there's some things that we have in the past relaxed. So I just want to give you some history. Uh, Councilmember Gama, uh, one of the things too is that CVS was actually in negotiation to open in One of the things too is that CVS was actually in negotiation to open in the old Mary's Market. And this was happening during Skiing Manager Butler's timeframe. And somehow they put the brakes on all of that, but that was certainly going to be a really big development because it's been a long time. I agree with you. It's been a long time empty, but it's, it was part and parcel to then the property owner of that shopping center. So sometimes our hands are tied with that from the city perspective of filling a building. And other times we can help move some things along if that's the case. I know that back in the day of Greg Brown, we actually had some things that were relaxed from the standpoint of. Of businesses wanting to come into the city. And we were negotiating some things on the side that could possibly end up being. A cost-saving measure for the businesses then to be considered. So, you know, there's some other things, some other. We do, but it's really part and parcel. There's, you know, multiple parties involved in getting these buildings filled. I agree with you. It'd be great to have, you know, all the buildings leased and everything a hundred percent occupied, but, you know, it does take some time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Berg.
Yeah, over, I'd say over the last three years or so, when Mr. Kenny joined us, he's been a real bargain. We've really gotten our money's worth out of him. He's brought an expertise in economic development that was not here previously. And he's doing it on a shoestring budget. And yep, we need to fill more of these spaces. I think maybe some of the responsibility might be with the shopping center owner. But if we sit back on our hands and just say, well, it's up to the owner of the shopping center, that's not going to get us anywhere. I think we have to follow Councilmember Gama's advice to, yeah, let's get more aggressive to try and fill as many of these open spaces as we can. Keep in mind that when Skunk Masters had the opportunity to leave us for greener pastures in Oxnard. They chose to stay, that the greener pastures are in Winnebago. And I'm sure he had, Mr. Kenny had had some play in that, but, you know, I'm just glad we have him. He's been a real bargain.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Berg. Anybody else want to pose a question or make a comment? All right. Well, let's go ahead and I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve his contract.
Oh, second.
All right. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Berg.
Very strong yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lynn Yoschnap.
Yes.
Councilmember Gama.
A very reserved no.
Councilmember Rollins.
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We're nearing the end of our meeting. We're at a point where we provide. Ask the member reports, comments and requests for future agenda items. I'll start with Councilmember Rollins.
In the past, since I've attended as a representative to reach, we're looking into various different ways that we can help the school. In the manner that many, many of the, it kind of ties into this economic business thing where. In order for you to go back to work, you need a place for your kids to be going to. And, and so the whole daycare childcare thing, we're looking in different ways that we can partner to see what we can do to build that up. Ventura County Air Pollution Board, I guess the one benefit to this COVID benefit is less people are out on the streets. So the emission readings have been quite low in Ventura County because of that. Finally, I'd like to commend the city staff. One of the things that came up last year regarding beach parking permits. Where people could not get their beach parking permit until the actual day that the other one expired. So July 1st was the very first day they could do it. And I guess now online they have the ability to fill. Normally you could go down to the, you know, to City Hall to get it now early. But because of the COVID, you still will be able to fill out that application in early. So come the day, July 1st, you're not rushing to wonder where I'm going to be able to get my beach parking permit. So thank you, staff.
Councilman Rollins, I have a question for you because I was looking for that application last night on the city's. I couldn't find it.
I did too, and I talked to Mr. Perez and it's in there.
Wow.
It's in there under Community Economic Development. I too went, you know, on the very cover thing, I put in beach parking permit. For me, that was the easiest way to do it.
Oh, I still didn't get to it. Well, it's good to know it's there.
I asked staff to kind of make it a little bit more clearer, and I think they're going to be doing such.
Thank you for that. Okay. Did I see a hand up from somebody else? Okay, are you done?
I am.
Let's move on then to Councilmember Gama.
I would just like to see an effort to improve communications with council. I don't know if we need to have it on the agenda, but. Perhaps we could. Alerts as to major changes that are coming. As we just heard, it's not always that easy to find things online. And I know we talked about it and I know it's in the works that there's going to be an announcement put out regarding the beach parking. Avenue, so to speak. But generally speaking, I think. I think we just want to make sure that all the council members are getting adequate information. It's difficult at times to answer questions from residents. And so I'm just hoping that we could find a way to get us all on the same page and all operating with the same information. And that is it for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Berg.
Yes, thank you very much. We had meetings last week with the Transportation Commission, also with Gold Coast Transit. And we are, SCAG Transportation Committee is also continuing to meet via Zoom. One thing that we, I would like to ask our city clerk, Krista, you're still out there. SCAG every year publishes a profile of cities within the region. This is last year's profile. You might want to go online, the SCAG website and see if the new profile for the city of Winnebago is. Online, we can get it printed up and start distributing some of those. Again, we are, these various agencies are balancing their books. As I mentioned earlier in this meeting, they're doing it with a lot of grant money coming from both the federal and state governments. It's not a good thing, although we're healthy right now. These agencies are healthy. We're going to have to tighten our belts. There's going to be a new paradigm in public transportation next two or three years. Just something to look out for. I'll try and bring updates on what's happening regarding that as we learn more. There's going to be a new normal out there and learn to live with it and make the changes that we can. And be patient with those that we can't. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just have a couple of things to report. I'll start with the Winnebago Water Agency. We had a meeting today that preceded the closed session that we had for city council. And we talked a little bit about do we or don't we ask for a variance? Because some of the numbers that had come out of Oxon Canyon and the use, the use of our water. Water supplier being United Water Conservation in Keegus. And so that was a really healthy discussion, I believe. We had our attorney who represents us in that water group. Peter Candy on the, on the Zoom call. And so that was very insightful. Hopefully we'll be taking a look at it in a future agenda item because we do have a hard deadline. Of filing of variants if we want something by June or within the June timeframe. So, you know, clock is ticking down on, on us. And there was some revision of some numbers and we took and realized that we were using less water than maybe what we had been allocated. So that's a good thing. And also too is that it's really great news for us to be using our. Water system and not having any bypass. And so. Great work from the standpoint of Public Works and, you know, Don Vela Fana and his team and the water group. As well as what United Water Conservation has been doing. And it's a, it's an all out effort with all the partners that we have within the Port Winnebago Water Agency. To make sure that we could use our system that's working for us. So good work team on that. On the California Joint Powers and Insurance, just a couple of things to mention there is that. The Executive Committee approved our joining what's called a captive. And that's where it's a pooled, a pooled source of insurance. And it has to be voted in by, you know, either board of directors or an executive committee like, like ours. But it's called JEM and it's actually located out of Virginia. And they have access to what we've been wanting for a real long time, access to the European market, London Insurance Market. And so this was a really big plus for us. So we did that within the last month of May and we usually have a monthly meeting there. It looks like, you know, we're looking at dates of October for the conference, so stay tuned. And maybe more of a Zoom version versus an actual gathering like several of you attended last year. When the conference took place in, in Indian Wells. So stay tuned for that. And then one other thing for them is that, you know, we have a representative from JPIA known as Maria Galvane. And so some of us know her on a, you know, personal relationship and we know her as Maria and, and others work with her on. On ongoing things from the city perspective. And so one of her colleagues passed away during this time of COVID. It wasn't about COVID. He just sick and he had cancer and within a month, he passed away. So I just wanted to recognize him for the years of service that he had with JPIA and he really helped build the organization. His name was Jim Gross. So I don't know if any of you had ever met him, but he was a counterpart to Maria. And really had a district that he was in charge of. So that was a great loss for the organization and that just happened within the last couple of weeks. On another note is the, the Council of Governments. So we met last week. One big thing to note there is that we're kind of behind on a meeting. We should have had an annual meeting this month and instead we pushed one of our previous meetings to a regular Zoom meeting this month. So the annual meeting's not going to be until September the 24th. And we're looking forward to actually having it at Moore Park Country Club. So, you know, with some of the relaxed measures here, we'll take a look at what it could actually come about as. We've typically had about 70 or 80 participants. So it looks like that could fall within even a social distancing guideline. And, and the capacity in the confines of the location. So more information forthcoming. So be on the lookout for that. And there was two really excellent presentations made. One was made by HDL, which is. You know, our source of what sales tax money has been to us. So we get that quarterly report from them. And so we had the Lamas of HDL actually present to the CAG. And there will be a follow-up PowerPoint presentation that City Manager Brad Connors will be sending. All of you on the council with regards to that. Bottom line is that they feel that we're going to really take a big hit. In terms of tax collection because of COVID. They really foresee, you know, just a couple of headlines here. They really foresee that we won't bottom out until 2021. And it's going to be very similar to the recession of 2008, 2009. And so I know that our projections show that we won't take that much of a hit because we already had Measure U that was passed. And so we get that extra cent. And so ours may not be as difficult as some of the other communities. But for the most part, they're looking at businesses really. Being hard hit by, by this COVID closure and all, and now trying to get back into the swing of things. And it's, they have worked with then some of the information that a leading California cities had, had collected. So that's one of the presentations coming to you. The second presentation was made by Bruce Stensley at EDCBC. And they're looking at how they had ramped up to take quite a bit of calls. They are actively working with, I don't know, like over 2,000 clients. I mean, they, they've engaged so many people in different webinars. They have a link on their website to the COVID. And they're looking at, you know, helping businesses get back off the ground. And be reopened. So there's quite a bit of resources on their website and that's a separate presentation that's coming your way. Last but not least, let me see what else I have here. I'm glad that we're going to be having an update on Red Mule because I'd like to see the development there. And then I appreciate you all carrying forward on the Community Benefit Fund. I had a really bad headache last week that I, or last meeting that I had to get off the call. And so I appreciate you going forward and making those things happen. I look forward to seeing what else gets developed. From those projects that are near, dear to my heart, like the dog park and the beach bathrooms. For the women and some of those other things that are really important for our community. That's all for me.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I'll be really quick. Our Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance District Board has resumed meetings. We're holding Zoom meetings. We hadn't met for several months and VRSD Ventura Regional Sanitation District remains on Zoom. And we've been meeting regularly, but I have nothing to report on those two committees other than that we, we've met. I would like to ask for the city manager and maybe Anna Hanley's support or the libraries. Maybe the library is who I need to ask support from is to sponsor and host Feed the Front Lines on June 27th. As many of you know, Miguel from the port has been very instrumental in going out throughout the county. And setting up food lines for food insecure families, especially among the farm workers. And so he and I, I attended one of the Feed the Front Line events and helped feed the farm workers and people who are food insecure. And we talked about doing something here in Port Winnebago. So we looked at June 27th as a date and like to perhaps use the library. A drive-through for distributing food. So Mr. City Manager, if you could help direct me to the right people to help get that arranged. I would like to do so. If the library doesn't work out, I'd like to maybe select another location. But we're pretty locked into that June 27th date and I know it's coming up. So if you wouldn't mind working with me, I would like to see that happen for our city residents here. I'd also like to ask for a presentation from the Ventura County Homeless Coordinator and the Continuum of Care people. I think this was something that was planned when Rod Butler was here and before COVID-19. And it, it stopped. It didn't happen because of COVID-19, I believe. So. I know they're very busy with their COVID-19 plans, but if we could get them on a future agenda in the next month or so. I really want to see what we can do in terms of helping our homeless here in Port Winnebago and, and doing a little bit more to. Take care of what's going on on our streets with regards to the homeless. Let's see, was there anything else? I wanted to thank Madam Mayor Pro Tem for dragging off the copy of her State of the City address. I don't know what the council's feeling is on doing the State of the City address this year, but. In talking to at least one of you, that was suggested that we, we do do it, that I prepare a State of the City address. And I'm going to probably depend. on our social media or media unit to help do that by video. So I just want to let you know that my radar is up on that, and I'll be working on that soon. And other than that, I don't have any other comments to add to discussion, so I'll go ahead and.
Before we close, you just reminded me of something with regards to the library. I noticed that the parking lot is in disrepair and often an area that draws in questionable people with questionable motives. And are we responsible for the maintenance of that lot? Or is the county responsible for the maintenance of that lot? And that's a question that I hope we could get resolved, and I hope that we could figure out a way to, to make that library more appealing to the visitors that attend there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Gama. Okay, with that, I want to remind the public that detailed information and updates about COVID-19 can be found on the city of Port Wainimi's emergency website, www-portwainimeemergency.org. The time is, where's my clock? 9:19. We will adjourn to the regular meeting scheduled for Monday, July 6, 2020, to be broadcasted at 6:30 PM via Zoom. So I want to wish everybody a happy 4th of July.
Happy 4th.
And let's continue to fight the COVID-19 and practice our social distancing and stay healthy. So take care, everybody. Thank you for your participation. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.